So we said, we're gonna call this special meeting in the town council budget session to order for January twenty-one. If you would rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And Peter is with us. So we're all present. This was, Paul, do you wanna lead us on this one? Or, because, or Eileen? This was a special session to talk about fire department personnel. Paul requested. Do you have a mic back there?
Yes, I do.
Oh, okay.
Um, when we were doing the fire department budget, we broke out the personnel costs. In the fire department budget, they are asking for four additional firefighters in this year's budget. And Chief Duke is here with a presentation for the town council for, asking for those four additional firefighters.
Okay.
At this time.
Thank you.
Can I give my opinion?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So, as you know, about a year ago, we went through a significant amount of information and facts with an eye toward applying for a grant for four firefighters. When we did that, we didn't apply for a grant just because it was available. We applied for a grant because we determined that, or in my mind, we determined that we needed four firefighters. To, you know, as I said, it wasn't just a simple, hey, there's, there's a grant available, let's, why don't we just try for it? We went through quite an exercise of going through the reasons why we need a fire, we need four new firefighters. And also, so, the, the idea behind it, at least from my perspective, not as, I can't represent you, but I can tell you kind of how I represented it to the two unions that I spoke to, I mean, the two sets of groups within the fire department and, and the chief, when I spoke to them about it. We came, as you recall, we kind of had all these different options. We can either hire the four firefighters, this was last year, hire the four firefighters, we can just have a grant and do nothing else and wait for the grant, or we can do a modified version whereby we would, we would provide the overtime, or you would provide the overtime to supply the additional staffing that would improve the situation. And, as I said, I, I took it upon myself to meet with the staff to talk about understanding that working forty-eight hours in a row is a very difficult thing, and that, that even though the money's nice, at some point, it then becomes, to me, a safety issue and a hardship almost, in that there would need to be mandatory overtime and that kinda thing. We, we kind of agreed between each other that, that that effort would be made on their, you know, by them to, to make that happen, with the understanding that we'd do everything that we could to, basically, add those, those four firefighters. I recognize times are different now and all those kinds of things, but I just wanted to kind of give a recap on how the conversation went and, just to remind everybody where we were last year, and that it was not simply a, hey, there's a grant available, let's apply for it. So, that's my little preamble there. So, thank you.
And before you start, you have additional personnel with you tonight? A new chief, an assistant chief?
I do, thank you. Seated to my near right, and as you know, is Assistant Chief Harris. He's relatively new to the department. He's been with us since the summer. And seated to his right is newly promoted Assistant Chief Brechtel. He's been with the department for about twenty years. He will be, his promotion will be official Sunday, Sunday this weekend. So, as of midnight on Sunday, he will be Assistant Chief Brechtel.
So, congratulations. Welcome. Good to have you here. Okay. So now you can, you can take off.
Well, thank you very much for your time tonight. As, as Eileen and Paul said, this is our presentation on, on why we feel we, we need and would like to add four firefighters to our staff. This is the principal change in our, in our budget. As we discussed a couple of weeks ago when I was here, we really didn't make any other changes or any other requests in the budget with an eye to, to this. So we're, we are in fact looking for four additional firefighters, one for each shift. Why do we need more? There's a number of reasons, and some of these we did discuss last year, so I'll try not to belabor them, but we wanted to just, just kind of go over them again, both for you and, and for anybody else who might be watching. Increasing complexity and acuity of calls. The call numbers are steadily going up over time, as well as the, the complexity of, of the care that's required, and in many cases, the acuity or the, the acuteness of the illness of the patient. Increasing number of large, excuse me, large residential buildings. You can't go through town without noticing that apartment and condo buildings are, are sprouting up like dandelions, which is a good thing, right? Growth is good, but we, we wanna make sure that we can meet that growth. Along with those buildings comes the potential for population growth, and we'll, we'll talk about some numbers there. And ten, ten personnel offers some significant increases in efficiency and versatility of operations over, over nine. So this next, this table, you've seen this data before, it's updated for this year. This basically just compares the breakdown of fire versus EMS calls, both by, by absolute number and, and percentage of calls. We presented it slightly different this year, but the numbers remain about the same. EMS calls are running at about sixty-five percent of our total. Fire calls are running at about thirty-five percent. And then down at the bottom, you see the total number of calls for the year. Those are, are hovering right around the three thousand to thirty-three hundred, thirty-one hundred range. There is an asterisk on twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, and we just wanted to note that and, and call out attention to the fact that, in that year, the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen budget is when the, the four firefighter positions were restored in that budget year.
What do you mean by restored?
So those were, those positions were to restore the ones that were lost in the twenty-eleven budget year. So I have a, I'll go-
So how many people were on your staffs in seventeen and eighteen?
Before the seventeen-eighteen budget year, it was eight. In the seventeen-eighteen budget year, we went to nine.
Okay.
And I'll touch on that a little bit more later, and kind of why that's important.
Thank you.
Can I just say something? So in two thousand and ten, there were nine. And then they, in two thousand and eleven-
Eleven.
They went down to eight, and this would bring them back up to nine again. Or, or no, that brought them up to nine again. And that's what he means when he says restored.
This, this slide here, again, is, is just an update on some data that we've shown before in a slightly different presentation. This just shows the breakdown of ALS, or advanced life support calls, versus BLS, basic life support calls, over the last four years. And again, we don't see a significant difference in, in, or a huge change in these. The, the ALS calls, obviously, we have more of them, about fifty-five percent to about forty-five percent BLS. And again, as, as you all know, as we've talked about, the ALS calls, by and large, require a, a larger response, just because of the number of tasks that have to be done in a, in a defined amount of time. This slide just refreshes the mutual aid, given and received, and as you can see, we know going back to twenty fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, that, that time period, we were using, we were receiving a great deal more mutual aid than we were able to provide. By some changes we made internally, as well as restoring that firefighter position, we've able, we've been able to bring that, that given and, and received ratio much, back into much better balance. So we're, we're, we're pretty close, you know, in and out there, at about forty, about forty calls per year.
So, let me interrupt you for just a second again. I wanna understand, seventeen and eighteen, you're running with nine people, because we restored, somehow you restored four firefighters, yes?
In October of seventeen, we hired four firefighters.
Okay.
So they came on-
The challenge of years.
Yes.
Pardon? Oh, that's, that's fine, I don't, but so nineteen, how many were, were we running with?
In nineteen, we were running with nine.
Okay. So why is eighteen asterisked? Nineteen ought to be asterisked as well, right? There are all nine?
My, my, sorry, my point with the asterisk was that it was in that seventeen-eighteen budget year when we, when we restored those positions. That was, that was what that denoted.
Okay.
I apologize for the confusion.
Got it. Okay. So nineteen, we're running with nine, and twenty, we do-
Nine.
Nine.
Nine, but we've been running with the, the additional, the, the plan that we put in place last year, where we've been supplementing that with overtime.
To always have one.
To not drop back to eight?
Right. Plus the daytime attendance, which starts at eight AM and ends at ten.
Okay. But beforehand, if it, if somebody was out, you would drop back to eight? You wouldn't necessarily-
Yes.
Always keep it at nine?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, this chart, this chart goes back a long way, I'll grant you. It goes back to two thousand and two. And the reason that I did that is, is to show, you know, the ever-increasing trend of, of our run volume going up. There, there's some little peaks and valleys, some of which I really can't explain. I don't, I have no explanation for what happened in two thousand and nine. Everybody was really healthy and, and practiced really good fire safety in two thousand and nine evidently, which is great. I mean, that's, that's a great thing. But, but the truth is, is the calls are going up, about thirty percent over the, that time span. And I, I used all of that time because I think it's important to note that, in nineteen ninety-nine is when the proposal was made and accepted to, to go from eight to nine personnel on duty. And we ran it nine, as the town manager mentioned, until the two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven budget year, where we lost the four personnel. We dropped down to eight. And then, in twenty seventeen, those were restored for us, so we were back up to nine. And then, there wasn't really room to put it, but in two thousand and twenty, as, as we explained, we've been running at a, a nine and then ten, you know, most of the time. I think it's also worth noting that, that the town population, if you chart the town population over this whole time span, it really didn't change significantly. It kind of hovered right around the twenty-five thousand, high twenty-five to low twenty-six. But yet, the call volume increased without the population changing, which, which tells us that the same number of people are calling more often, right? If the population isn't increasing, but the call volume is, that, those people statistically are calling more often. And I think that's important to consider when we're looking at the amount of building that's going on and the, the people that that is likely to bring with it. I don't, there's no reason to believe that those people won't call in a similar sort of fashion. And in addition to the, the volume creeping up, the number of times that we have simultaneous or overlapping calls has increased significantly over that time period. I don't have hard data for all of that time, but I can tell you from experience that we are getting two, three, and four calls simultaneously, far more frequently than we were, you know, ten years ago. Nor do I have an excellent explanation for that.
On the other hand, you haven't had to use mutual aid as much.
We have not, in part because we, of those people that we put back to, that we went back from, you know, eight, sometimes nine, to, to nine and frequently ten. So that has made a big difference.
Lon?
Yeah, Chief, as, as well as population increase, do you keep a, a track on demographics like age? In other words, is the town growing older and we're asking for more help?
I apologize. We do not keep those. I'm sure they're available. I don't have them at hand.
Thank you.
It, it is a good point.
Barbara, did you have a question? Or a comment?
No, but I can ask one.
I didn't want you to feel ignored as well.
So of your call volume, how many of those are actually coming from our hotels in the area?
Hmm, they gave me the number and I-
It's okay. I just wondered if it was, if that percentage was also increasing as well.
Do you have a number? I don't have a number. I would bet we're in a hotel a couple of times a week, so I would say, I would be comfortable saying at least a hundred calls a year, maybe more. It went, it went up and, and through the efforts of both the hotel owners and the police department and the town, it's, it's come back down some, so, but I would be comfortable saying it's easily a couple of times a week. So we mentioned, we mentioned construction, so we wanted to just touch on some of the details in the construction. This is what's either been approved, is currently underway, or completed in the two thousand and eighteen to current and, and looking, you know, stuff that's approved or underway obviously isn't done yet, it's not occupied yet, but it's, excuse me, it's in process. So that, that comprises a hundred and eighty additional single-family homes, one thousand one hundred and forty-nine units in multifamily buildings. So that's, that's just over eleven hundred apartments or condos in multifamily buildings. And one of the things that I think is noteworthy about those is because they're three, four, and five-story buildings, that puts three hundred and seventy-five units at least above the second floor level. And second floor level is what we can reasonably reach with the, the ground ladders, the, the portable ladders that are carried on our engines. Beyond that, it's, it's really not practical to reach those, we need the ladder truck to, to do that. Approximately a hundred new hotel rooms. Again, some of those have been completed, but there, there is a hotel proposed and approved for the bottom of Premium Outlets Boulevard. So there's, there's another hundred or so rooms there. Assisted living beds, there's a, there's a proposal to add about twenty-four to thirty assisted living beds on D W A Highway. So what does that mean in, in people? So we talked about roughly fourteen hundred and fifty units, multifamily, single-family, some senior housing, some nursing homes, or assisted living, equals the, equals the potential of, of as many as thirty-eight hundred potential new residents. We didn't, I did not include the, the senior housing or the assisted living in the, in that number. Obviously, that, the census number wouldn't apply to that.
What census number is that?
So the, the census number says that the, that in each living unit, there is two-point-six-three people. So we use the number of units-
Who's census is that?
The US Census. That was the number.
Is that's a national number average?
Yes. That's what I was able to research when I looked for, when I wanted to know how many people did, would fourteen hundred units mean? And they, the average that the US Census gives is, is two-point-six-three residents per household. So we used that. But again, we didn't use, we didn't apply that to the senior housing or the assisted living for obvious reasons.
Well, yeah. I could believe it for single-family homes. I'm not sure I believe that high a number for the multis, but whatever.
Yeah, and, and that may well be, but it was difficult to, I had a hard time dividing the numbers and, and fine-tuning it that, you know, that gives us a, kind of a ballpark.
You might get some information like that out of Tim Thompson.
Yeah. Most of this data did come from Tim Thompson, actually.
Okay.
Yes.
The national average numbers?
No.
Oh.
I don't know.
Those I pulled, like, as I said, I pulled those from the US Census. What they-
Units came from ten.
The, all of the-
Well, I know the units did, and I appreciate that. But every time I've ever talked to them, or I've ever looked at any other census data locally, dealing with whether we expand the schools or not, it's always been like one and a half at most, people per unit, but-
Condo's got a quarter.
Pardon?
Oh, no, student, I'm thinking students. The condo-
Well, students are like point six or less, so it's, or, or it's really small. But, anyway, it's okay.
Less than two people per unit?
Pardon?
You're saying less than two people per unit?
That's, that's what I understand, but I, I don't have any facts to back that up either, so.
Let's use two to be our home.
Sure.
It's still-
It's still three thousand or so.
If we use two, I mean, that brings us to twenty-nine hundred, which, you know, to me, is still a substantial number. Ten of those, ten of those multi-units are, are already complete and are occupying at least four hundred and eighty units. It's, they're, most of them that we're seeing built are forty-eight unit buildings, there are a few sixty-fours. So, again, we're, we're pushing five hundred units that are already completed and occupying with more still underway. And, and in an emergency, obviously, because of their size, because of the number of people in them, these buildings require a much, far more people to respond, to, to deal with an emergency there, just because of the sheer square footage, the people, the time it takes to, even if all we have to do is just evac, if, all we have to do is evacuate the building, right? That's forty-eight units, forty-eight doors that we have to either knock on or open, apartments that we have to clear, that sort of thing. So the, the, the personnel requirements are far greater.
For a fire?
For a fire or any other sort of emergency that might require clearing the building. A carbon monoxide leak, a significant water problem that could be, you know, causing a danger of a ceiling collapse or something like that, a fire, any, any type of emergency like that, gas leak, anything that would require clearing the building.
Yep.
So the, what does ten firefighters do for us that nine doesn't? This kind of, this shows our deployment model at nine versus ten, and, and what we can put on the road in an, in our, with our on-duty staffing. So at nine, obviously, I know this again is, is a review, but we can get Engine One and Ambulance One out of our central fire station, and then, as we've talked about in the fa, in the past, out of Station Two, we have Engine Two and Ambulance Two, but they share a crew, so we can't deploy those at the same time. It's a one or the other type of thing. And then, at, at ten firefighters, that one additional person allows us to slightly modify our deployment, and we can get Engine One, Ambulance One, we can get the second ambulance out of Central, it's Ambulance Three. So that enables us to get two ambulances on the road, still have our other engine in service available for a fire call, or to provide the additional staffing that's needed that, that we want for those ALS calls. So I think it's important to note, too, that when we start to stack ambulance calls, we're not able to send the same number of people that we would send to a single ambulance call, or perhaps two, because we just don't have them. So, you know, once those calls start to multiply, you're not going to get the five people that we typically, that we try to deploy on an ALS call, you're gonna get maybe the two on the ambulance, you might get the engine, but you might not, because the engine might still be at the last call. So this gives us the ability, at ten, to respond to Engine One and all three ambulances simultaneously, or some other combination of other vehicles that we might need for a specific type of emergency, possibly the heavy rescue, or another engine, or the forestry trucker. I digress.
And if a call is a BLS call, you would send how many?
It depends on how it comes in and where people are located, where, where our apparatus is located. Typically, for a BLS call, if it's, if the information that comes from nine-one-one tells us clearly it's a BLS call, we would respond to the ambulance by itself, unless another unit is closer. Sometimes the ambulance will be responding from the hospital, so we would send a unit that's in town that's closer, or they might be out on the air returning or doing some kind of detail, they might be closer, so we would send them, just to get the, the personnel on the scene as quickly as possible.
But if, but if you know it's BLS, you, you wanna send at least two on the ambulance.
Absolutely. We have to send two on the ambulance.
They do, um-
Right.
No, but I had five or six show up at my house. I was just curious what the-
Well, they knew the county town council.
That didn't make it advanced. I was still walking around with my arm sticking out, but anyway. Okay, thank you.
So the benefits of ten, I kinda touched on these, I jumped ahead a little bit, but this slide just kind of outlines it a little bit more. It does enable us to staff the three ambulances simultaneously, and still keep, like I said, that, that engine in service available for, if there is a fourth call, or to support one of the ambulances at an ALS level call. We talked about how many people are, are starting to occupy spaces above the third floor. We feel, we feel it's very important to be able to, to respond to ladder truck immediately with on-duty staffing and not have to wait for a mutual aid ladder trucker, wait for callback personnel to come in. So that enables us to do that. Obviously, we can't do the third ambulance and the ladder together, but we can get one or the other out. The more people that we can put on the ground in the event of a fire, even a fire in a single-family home, the faster and more efficiently we can operate. There's a, a vast number of tasks that need to be done nearly simultaneously in a coordinated fashion, and all of them take people. And then, that's the only thing that makes them better, is, is the timely application of people. When fires do occur, they grow exponentially faster than ever before, which leaves the, leaves the occupants less time to escape, and requires that we provide more personnel to successfully control the fire and stop the loss. So that's, that's a key in, in that better, more efficient response. Helps us maintain our mutual aid balance, right? We, we made efforts to, to bring our mutual aid use and provision back into balance, and we wanna maintain that, so that we continue to be a good, responsible mutual aid partner. We can reduce response time, not necessarily in the way you would think, we don't get there faster, but if we have a unit available, as opposed to waiting for a mutual aid unit, or having to wait for, say, the engine to leave one ambulance call, to drive to the next ambulance call, to meet a mutual aid ambulance, it brings our response time down. We can get to more calls more quickly. And then operationally maxed, we talked a lot about that, I'm sure it's a term that you remember. I'll be totally honest, my fancy chart-making ability does, does not hold up to chief couriers, so I don't have as many fancy charts. But what I can tell you is that we looked at the data for operationally maxed, and what we found is that average with nine-person staffing, we are operationally maxed about thirty-two times a month, at least once a day. At ten-person staffing, because of these things we've talked about, we're able to drop that to about sixteen times a month. So we cut it pretty much in half on a monthly average. So, I, I think that's, that's key. I mean, that tells us, and again, as, as we talked about before, operationally maxed is when we've used up all of the on-duty personnel with calls that are ongoing, so the next call would have to be either handled by mutual aid, or it might have to be, depending on the, on the acuity of the call and the, the priority of the call, it might have to wait until a company clears. You know, a wire down or something like that might have to wait till a company clears. Obviously, an emergency call, we would dispatch the closest unit and the, and a mutual aid company.
Do you, if I can interrupt again?
Of course.
When you're operationally maxed, do you start calling back overtime people, or to-
So, yes, to answer your question, simply, yes. Before we get to the operationally maxed point, we have, pardon me, we have toned out or paged off-duty personnel. How many we get depends on a number of factors, you know, who's, who's on duty, who is off-duty and available, that sort of thing. So, we don't get a, a huge off-duty response. We get a few, and it, and it varies by the day.
Okay. And then, from there, you go to mutual aid?
Correct, yes.
To backfill the, the station while everybody's out?
Yes, sometimes. So, basically, the, kind of by convention, communities in this area do not provide mutual, do not provide ambulances for station coverage, so they, because they're, they are in essentially the same position we are. They will not drive an ambulance to our town and park it in our station. If we call them to a scene, they'll come, but they won't send one to sit in our station while ours go to the hospital and come back. It just, and we, and we operate the same way. If, if somebody calls, we'll send one to the scene, but we won't put one in somebody's station.
Okay. Peter?
Chief, do you guys use AMR or private ambulance service at all? Do you ever have to refer them?
They are in our, they're one of our mutual aid partners, both out of Manchester and Nashua, so depending on where the call is, we'll call them if they're the closest, most appropriate.
Okay.
And similarly, we will, we will back them up, too. If the city of Nashua calls, because AMR is, you know, is, is fully, fully deployed, we'll, we'll send an ambulance to them. So, the last slide. How much does it cost? The year-one cost for four firefighters, including salary benefits, uniforms and protective clothing, is, is just north of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And if the, if the proposal is approved, we propose having, getting a hiring process starting late April, early May, so that we would have, we would actually be able to put candidates, bring, bring candidates in on July one, so there wouldn't be a long wait, you know, while, while we run a process. If it was fully approved, we would, we would propose to run the process ahead of time and, and be ready to, have them ready to hit the ground in early July. That is all I have.
Okay. Finley?
Thanks, Chief. I was wondering, would you happen to know what type of potential savings in our overtime account might happen if we had four new firefighters?
I don't know the number off the top of my head, if I can- If I can, I'm going to defer to Paul.
We already accounted for that in the budget, in the savings, in the overtime line.
It was like ninety K or something?
Yeah, around ninety K. I'm just trying to see if I can do quick Excel math here. Yeah, around, right underneath, just south of ninety thousand dollars. Just in the overtime line alone, and then there's benefits on top of that.
And what was the last thing you just said?
Ninety thousand, and there's benefits on top of that.
Okay.
So another twenty-five or forty percent or some silly number.
Yeah, at least around thirty-five, forty percent. Thank you.
Yes, Eileen?
I just, I just wanted to point out that there's a difference between what the chief is requesting and what I have in my budget. So he is proposing that we staff to ten at all times. And in my budget, I have proposed hiring four, but dropping to nine when necessary. So that's why the reduction in overtime. He does not propose the same thing. He proposes that, which is certainly his, you know, his right to do. So he has proposed four firefighters and the overtime to cover them so that there's always ten on duty.
But that's not what this four hundred and sixty thousand covers, right? I mean, this four sixty is just to cover the cost of four people.
Right, but what we were proposing in our budget is four sixty minus the over, minus ninety thousand dollars in overtime.
Okay. Peter?
I, I don't have a doubt that the fire department needs the four firefighters.
You need your mic on, please.
I don't have a doubt that the fire department needs four firefighters. But I'm also concerned at that number, four hundred and sixty thousand, with our budget. And so I've had some time to talk to the chief and the town manager. And I'd like to approach it in this manner, that we agree to the four firefighters, but the hiring isn't until January first of the fiscal year. And that saves us the cost of two firefighters for six months, if my math is right. So the impact, instead of an impact of four hundred and sixty thousand, it's an impact of two hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars. And that gives the fire department six months to, I know the chief said they could do it sooner, but that gives the fire department six months to get their ducks in a row, to have these guys ready to go on January first. You know, that and, you know, the overtime. I'd still like to see the overtime that was given, about the ninety thousand, still, still, still taken. So that, that's just, I, I want them to get the firefighters, but I'd like to try to help the taxpayers as well. So this is, to me, is, I think, a fair compromise to get us where we need to be. And I'd like to hear from my fellow counselors, if anybody's interested in commenting, as well as the chief and everybody.
Chief, do you want to respond to that first, or?
Sure, thank you. It would be my preference to, obviously, to start them July first. As, as the town manager spoke about at the beginning, we approached the council with a request for four firefighters this year, or excuse me, last year, I apologize, last year at this time. And the decision was made to, to not hire four firefighters, but to provide us with a similar staffing level through overtime, which we really appreciate. And it has, it has filled the, it kind of has filled the gap. The, my concern is that everybody in my department made a commitment to fill that gap for this year, and they've done so, you know, often at, at some sacrifice. You know, they've, they've worked when they didn't necessarily want to, worked more shifts in a row than they necessarily wanted to. I'm concerned about pushing that status out another six months. Where it's going to be another six months from now until July, obviously, sorry. It's another six months from now till July that we're going to continue to operate in this manner. And Counselor Albert's suggestion would add another six months to that. So a full year from now that we would be continuing to, in my, in my phrase, to make ten out of nine. And I, while possible, I don't feel it's, I don't feel it's the best choice.
Right. I fully understand that, but I, hopefully you understand where he's coming from as well. And we, as a council, are looking at a significant increase in costs this year. And we're just trying to understand any way that we can possibly control that or?
I absolutely do, and I.
I mean, another opportunity might be, if you don't need all four at one time, can you take one in July, one in, you know, November, one in January, one in April? Or, I mean, is, is it possible to spread it out enough that we, we start to get some relief, but we get some impact or some, some relief for this year? Because the way COVID-19 is hitting things, the way everything is going on, it's going to get extremely difficult for us to meet budgets.
Absolutely.
And we need people. I'm not disagreeing. We need those people to efficiently deal with the issues in town.
Yep.
Just, just looking to see if there's any leeway or any, any motions that we think would be helpful or if they're in fact restrictions that we can't do something more flexible.
So, I mean, there's always flexibility. What I, what I proposed to the town manager and what she graciously allowed me to just propose to you is, would be my first choice. Choice number one would be to hire four firefighters in July and staff to ten, twenty-four, seven, because our call volume is, although it, our call volume is the call volume, we can't predict by day, by hour necessarily, when we're going to need them. If I, if there was, short of that, I would prefer the suggestion that Counselor Albert made of hiring four in January to hiring them one or two at a time through the year. If the savings were equal, you know what I mean? If the cost were equal, I think that would be the better solution than, than one or two at a time. One of the goals of the department is to try to, try to build consistency and streamline how we operate, both from day to day and from hour to hour. Every time there is a fluctuation in the number of personnel, it requires a fluctuation in how we operate. And every time you have to do that, there's another level of decision-making that has to take place in a, in a dynamic, you know, high-risk environment. So the more we can streamline that and make it consistent, the safer and more efficiently we can operate. So out of those two choices, I would prefer to take four at the half-year mark as opposed to, you know, one or two at a time spread out through the year. That would be easier for us to, easier for us to, and more beneficial to us, to deploy.
And how difficult is it to find four people to come on at one point in time? Do you not see any issues there?
No, not terribly. Particularly given, we will know, you know, effectively in April, what the, what the outcome of this is. So we'll be able to plan and say, okay, we need to, if we want to have four people hitting the ground in July or four people hitting the ground in January, we'll, we'll back up accordingly to, to make sure that that process happens. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. I guess I'm, you know, and of course, if the budget doesn't pass in April, it's. Everything's messed up.
We're status quo at that point, yeah.
Okay, I have a couple of comments and a couple of questions. I'm going to ask a question first, so I had to give Paul some time to figure something out for me. What would be the tax impact of the two different costs? What would be the tax impact of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars on our tax rate versus two hundred and thirty thousand? And I'll give you time to figure that out while I make comments.
Thirty-six thousand a penny, so. Is what I figured the other day.
I'll let Tom figure out the. So while we're waiting for the calculations, just a couple of things. The fancy chart that you talked about was what convinced this group last year about the need for ten. It reflected the number of times that surprised all of us that a second ambulance could not be sent when there was a call for it. The other thing was, there was a disturbing trend of the overtime that the paramedics had to do, that they were, we were concerned that they were literally doing too many hours and that that was affecting their health and efficiency on the job. So I think we have to remember that in terms of, they already proved to us that they need ten. In my opinion, the debate is the impact on the tax rate, and that's why I'm asking the question. I also have to make a point of saying that this council has been extraordinary in controlling costs. I asked Paul, and I can get past that if you want, a ten-year history of what the tax rate has been and how it's been broken down, town versus school. The town has been remarkable. I don't think anybody can deny that. And do, do we have discomfort of the increasing? Absolutely. But remember, we're only twenty percent of the tax rate. And somehow, we have twenty to twenty-five percent is all, that's it.
I always thought it was thirty percent.
Well, no, it's like twenty-five.
We're twenty percent of the tax rate now. And yet, we are taking responsibility or feeling the responsibility for the total tax rate. So I think we have to maintain a perspective that we are not solely responsible for the total tax rate. And although we should take responsibility, I am not denying that, and I think we've really been good about that, when there are times that there has been justified increase. It doesn't mean we do this every year. But when it's justified, I think we need to respond to that justification and not feel like we're totally responsible for the whole tax rate. We're only twenty percent. The rest of it's been school. We're not responsible for what the school does, nor is the school responsible for us. So I'm just hoping that we keep that in perspective. And I do understand the concern, and it is justified, but I think we have to maintain a perspective. So Paul, do we have to, did I give you enough time to calculate? Yeah, I should have known. So what will the tax rate go up, you know, not the total, but how much would it go up based upon four hundred and sixty thousand?
Four hundred and sixty thousand dollars on, for the firefighters on the tax rate is thirteen cents.
And what would it be if it was two hundred, two hundred and thirty thousand? Literal eight?
Seven cents.
Okay, seven cents.
Can I, can I say something, Nancy?
Yep, go ahead.
A very important point is that we remove the overtime for, for the nine people for half the year. So if you want to maintain what you're doing now currently for another six months, there's a number that is associated with that, that overtime amount.
For those six months.
So basically, continuing the process, the, the number of staffing that we have through, through January. So it's not an even split from.
I understood.
Okay.
Okay, well, but that makes sense.
I keep repeating the same thing.
No, no, but that makes sense, because I asked for two hundred and thirty thousand, and that's not accurate, because you have to put the overtime that would be necessitated, required for the six months when you don't have the four.
This would be forty-five?
No, it would not. Oh, well, it would not. I have a calculation to include the benefits that I've done for this. It's not forty-five thousand dollars, just in overtime. The total cost would be sixty thousand dollars, including benefits for the overtime factor.
So we could say like?
For the six months. So that includes retirement, workers' comp and everything.
So that's ninety thousand, would that be?
No, it's, no, it's total, the total cost is sixty for the, that we'd have to add back.
So two nine, so we're really talking about twenty, ninety thousand?
Right, right, right. I also want to make a point of clarity, please? If I may? It's two hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars savings for the salary. And that four hundred and sixty thousand dollar number includes equipment.
Right.
We're going to have to buy the equipment.
Once.
Regardless if they start July first or January first. Protect, it's the protective clothing, helmet, protective clothing, things of that sort. So it's a two hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollar salary savings.
Sixty-one, wow. And fourteen cents?
But the, that is a fully loaded cost. So that includes all the benefits in there. So these numbers I'm giving you are fully loaded, including benefits.
So adding the overtime?
Adding the overtime.
Adding overtime and taking into account, we have to fund all of those?
The clothing and the?
Extra pieces, gives us what delta, what's?
A decrease of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars.
So that's getting closer.
I can give you, give me a minute.
Four cents, five cents?
We can push a little harder, I guess, and wonder why we're only saving ninety thousand in overtime by adding four people, when overtime is paid at time and a half, which would be like adding six people. Never mind. Go ahead. What are you going to figure?
No, we got it. The, the num, for the hundred and fifty thousand apparent savings, it's about a nickel, four or five cents.
Okay, so I, I think we have to, I wanted to be able to get a more specific and concrete number to deal with in the reality of it, taking all those things into account. And personally, that's just me personally, and I've been a stickler on this for a long time, long time. There comes a time when you've got to bite the bullet. So we bite the bullet now, we do it next year. What's the difference? Next, I mean, because we're going to be paying, let's say we do the January, okay? So we do that. Next year, it's going to be the full boat.
Right, but it eases you into it, I think is what Pete was shooting for. That's the way I took it anyhow.
And I agree with that, but is it, to me, it's?
Is it penny wise and pound foolish?
Exactly. Because you're still talking about the initial problem of the overtime, having to do overtime. That's not resolved. That's still the issue as it is, was then. So to me, is it worth that difference? Personally, it is. Now, obviously, we'll have the consensus, and that's my opinion. But I'm happy with the compromise.
There were two other people wanting to talk. Eileen, you wanted to say something additional or not? No?
It'll come back to you.
Barbara?
Yeah, chief. So when you bring a new firefighter on, obviously, there are two types. One is a brand newbie and the other one is someone with experience coming in from somewhere else. What's the uptime before they're a hundred percent onboard, trained and in the mix?
As you said, it does vary. Typically, our probationary period runs between six and twelve months. At the end of that period, they are expected to be able to operate, I don't want to say independently, because we don't operate independently, but they're, they're expected to be fully operational at that point. As you said, some folks that we bring in with experience come up to speed very quickly. They know the tasks and that sort of stuff. We just have to kind of bring them up to speed with how we do things. And so we could, I would say, best case, probably sixty days, somebody could be onboard and providing a meaningful contribution to the shift. Would we, you know, can they do every single task? No, but they can provide, they can provide a meaningfully useful contribution to the group.
Now, I've been a hiring manager for most of my career, my whole. Do you really want four newbies onboard all at the same time? That's a lot of resource-intensive work to bring four newbies up onboard.
So for us, there's pros and cons to that. The con, of course, is that's four brand-new people that we have to, that we have to train up. The pro is, is that we spread them out across the four shifts. We put, typically, we put one on each of the groups. So there's only, in theory, there's only one working at any one given time. The other advantage to it is that with that group of four, it gives you, in the very early stages, the first week to three weeks, you have a group that you can, that can operate together for the, for the training aspect. We can put one senior member with them. Typically, what we'll do, I should back up. Typically, what we'll do with somebody, when we bring four people in, is we'll put them on, on days for like two weeks. So they'll work Monday through Friday on a modified schedule, so they're just there during the day. And we'll put a senior member, an officer with them, and they'll, we'll take them through a number of drills. We'll take them around and show them how to get to the hospitals and how we operate, and they'll learn their way around town, and they'll, they'll learn how we do stuff. By having four at the same time, frequently, that's helpful, because you can, it gives you more flexibility than you would have with necessarily just one person. Sometime, a lot of what we do, obviously, is group and team-based, so you have your team built in.
Okay, so I think I hear you saying that it's going to be? Okay, so I think I hear you saying that it's gonna be less labor-intensive for you and your staff to bring all four on at the same time than it would be just to bring on, say, two, starting in July, when the new budget year starts, and then two later.
Barbara?
Is your mic on?
Yeah, he dropped.
It was.
Yes, it would be, it would be more efficient, because we can do it all in, we can do it in one group as opposed to splitting it out, you know, two at a time or one at a time.
Okay, okay, thank you.
One of the things that, that I always have trouble wrapping my head around is that you have four shifts that are running 24 hours or some straight period. You're not, you don't have day and night shifts, per se. And, and I keep having to correct myself when I think about, well, you know, is days worse than nights worse than evenings for, you know? No, you're working full shifts, so you're on a shift, and then you're off for three shifts. And then you're back on, which is one or two days or whatever it is. I don't know how you guys schedule, but it operates so differently that those four people would be spread across completely different times theoretically, once they've gone through that initial training.
Yes, yep. And typically, with, if, with a proposal like this, if we're successful, we would, we would spread them, obviously, across all four shifts. Because as, as somebody said, you wouldn't want them all in one group together. That's, you know, there, there's a huge liability there. But yeah, so we, we would spread, we would spread them out.
Right, I'm, I'm kind of with Nancy here, is that, you know, I'm looking, we use 2.5 in my industry as calculating units in population for family size. And we, I mean, we're looking at, you know, a few thousand more people in town when all of these units are completed. I tend to agree with the 10 per shift. I think it gives you more flexibility when you drop back to nine, then you drop back to nine. You don't have to bring an overtime person onboard. You know you can, you can easily handle that. So I'm leaning in that direction. I just am still trying to figure out, you know, what's the best mix? Because as people know me, I'm, I'm rather conservative with budget. So I'm trying to figure out the best way to bring them on, so that it doesn't drive you people crazy, and you get the maximum efficiency out of your training, and at the same time, you know, people aren't having a heart attack when they see the budget rate.
One second, Peter. Are you talking about staffing to 10 always, and so you would hire with over, you bring in people at overtime if somebody has time off or, or whatever? Or are you talking about dropping back to nine?
Yes. What the, the number that the, that the town manager has proposed in the budget is indicative of 10 at full staff, dropping to nine when someone takes a day off. So there would be nine, best case, there would be 10. If everybody comes to work, and nobody takes a day off, there's 10 all the time. If somebody takes a day off, there would be 10 during the day from 8:00 AM to midnight, and nine from midnight to 8:00 AM.
Because you have that additional person?
Because we would, with the, with what they've funded for overtime, we would be able to fill that 10th spot from 8:00 AM to midnight with either overtime or the daytime attendant position when that, when that's filled. We aren't able to, we can't fill that all the time. We're just, we don't have enough, we can't get all of the slots filled. So that's, that's what that would represent.
Peter was next, and.
Thanks. Paul, last year.
Mike?
Last year, the overtime budget, 8111, was, if I look at it, 465, is that correct? 465,000?
Two years ago.
Two years ago? So last year, it was 517.
Yes.
Okay. How much of that was used last year?
Last year that you're looking at, we're in right now. The last, 517 you're looking at? We're in right now.
Okay, I'm sorry, the year before that, then?
That's how much we spent. That was actually what we spent, 465.
We used up the whole overtime line?
No, that's the line.
That's the amount that was spent.
What you see is actual, then budget, budget. So the one that you're looking at was the actual amount. So it's, it's not comparing it to a budget number. It's telling you what actually was spent.
Okay, so how did, did we use, I guess I'm trying to figure out is.
What was the budget number in 2019?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for not breathing.
And, and while you're doing that, Paul, thank you. Chief? Yeah, I, I don't know, I, I've never, but do you guys, do all candidates come out of the Fire Academy, and then they, they look to be hired? Or do you, or is there potential you're gonna have to send somebody to the Fire Academy?
Most of our candidates come trained. It's, it's a little different than the Police Department, where you, they have to be hired before they can go to the Police Academy. We, our practice is to find the best candidate with the best level of training. Because we get the best person that way, and we have to expend the least amount of time and money to train them. But, you know, first and foremost, we want to make sure that we get the, the best person. We can, we can teach them the skills, but we wanna, we wanna bring in the best people. In, in years past, most of the time, we bring on people who are, who are fully trained or very close to fully trained. They've been to the classes that they, the required classes. And then anything beyond that is.
Yeah, and I, and I know how competitive it is in law enforcement to find certified folks. So I just didn't know if it's harder for you guys or easier.
I think it may be a little easier, because, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in law enforcement, they have to, someone has to be associated with a department before they can go to the academy. And we don't have that restriction. So the people who are able will go out and get the classes on their own, because they know it makes them more marketable. You know, quite frankly, they're, they're a more marketable candidate when they can come in the door with, with all the required certs. So we certainly do look for that.
So fiscal year 1920 is, had COVID involved in there, in the actual amount. So the budget was 348,235. They spent 465,635, and that, some of that overtime that the, over the budget was due to COVID, and we did get reimbursed for that.
It shows up in revenue rather than.
But, right, reduction in the overtime. So because we have to gross, gross appropriate and charge off, that's why the numbers are that way. And I can't tell you, out of that 465, what exactly was spent for COVID-related overtime, but it was, that's involved in that number.
Okay, thank you.
It's still overtime?
It, it is still overtime, and they dispel, still spend the 465. But when COVID hit in March, the Fire Department changed procedure for overtime. And they can explain, if you want to get into it, what they did for staffing, which was more overtime than just staffing to 10. The, the, that, yeah.
I'm, I'm happy to explain it if, if it would be beneficial.
All right, take a, take a snip, swag at it, yeah.
In late February, early March, when, when COVID started to ramp up the first time, and, and people were, were putting plans in place. As the town manager alluded, our new assistant chief came up with a spectacular plan. We, we put some additional staffing on. We staffed to 11 around the clock in order to be able to roll all three ambulances, as well as what we called the COVID car. The concern at the time was that hospitals were being overloaded, emergency services were being encouraged to not bring people to the hospital. So that wasn't, that wasn't always the first priority. So the first priority at that stage of the game was to go out and assess the patients who were potentially COVID-positive, and determine if they needed to go to the hospital. And, and sometimes they were, you know, they were instructed not to because of the load in the hospital. So we put the car on the road with one person in it, with PPE, personal protective equipment, excuse me, and, and appropriate instruments to go out and assess the, the patients and make a determination. And the reason we did that was, one, it cut down on the number of people, number of our people that it exposed, from two or three to one. It reduced the, the rolling resources. We had a car on the road instead of an ambulance. And, and particularly critically at that time is the, the personnel exposure and the, the, what we call the burn rate of personal protective equipment. There wasn't a lot available, and we wanted to ensure that we weren't using it at a, at a, an astronomical rate. So we were able to use it at a rate of maybe one set per call, potentially, instead of two or three sets. So that's what we did at that point. And if I may jump in real quick, my very helpful staff was able to tell me that in 2020, we responded to the hotels collectively about 200 times. So I was off, my apologies.
Yeah, that's reasonably close, I, I guess, so. Yeah, hey, you know, engineering, that would be pretty good.
500's Hall of Fame every year, right?
There you go. Did you have a question or a comment?
Chief, I was wondering if, is the daytime attendant on-call, or is he scheduled, or he or she scheduled regularly?
Uh, they're there, they're at the firehouse regularly. They have a, they have a very flexible schedule. We don't have a fixed schedule for those folks. Most of them work in other places, because it's a part-time position. So we have some, some pretty flexible scheduling, in that they sign up for the shifts for which they're available on any given week, but they're, they're, they're their part of the crew.
Okay, so when we bring somebody in for the daytime from the 8 until midnight, and that's in an overtime situation, is that along, along with a daytime attendant? Or is that filling in when a daytime attendant's not available?
That would fill in if a daytime attendant wasn't available. Or if another full-time member was out, depending on.
Right, yeah.
But yes, it would be taking the place of that, not in addition to.
Thanks, Chief.
Peter?
Chief, and I know we talked about it, the, when somebody calls out and 24 hours is available, you don't have to necessarily make somebody work 24 hours. You can divide that up 12 and 12, correct? Or however, however it's appropriate that you can get the folks to come in to work, correct?
It is a possibility, the first option is the 24. If, if somebody, if somebody takes it, if it's offered and somebody takes the 24, then, then the whole thing goes. It is possible, in the, there is a possibility in the process to break it up if need be.
So if you get, because the concern is, I've been hearing, and you've mentioned it too, is fatigue. So, you know, you got a guy coming off, it's willing to do it, but he's tired, and then somebody else is willing to take 12, they cut it up, you cut it in half. So that sort of makes sense, rather than pushing it, I guess.
Do you have anything, though?
On other topics, yes, but I know we're talking about the firefighters, so.
I think that's the topic of the night in the Fire Department. If you have more stuff in the Fire Department, we had asked those questions before, so we could, we can dig into those, but.
No, no, it's super force.
Nancy?
Just to clarify, we probably won't make a decision tonight, right? That'll be in the final determination, or what?
Right. I mean, the, the budget as it's presented has the four firefighters in it. So when we come back next week to talk about any changes that we want to make as a town council, that's when we make any final decisions.
And I think, knowing that, I really would like the public to let us know. I mean, I'd like to get some feedback. Uh-oh, Finley, Finley doesn't want to hear.
No, I don't, public input is always good. I'm just thinking that we know that it's a necessity. So our conversation, at least in my world, has been about, is there any possibility?
It's the tax rate, that's the issue. I don't think anyone disagrees with.
They can definitely call in, they can text, email, doesn't matter at all to me. I think it's all good, but I don't, for us tonight.
If people want to, the opinion would be valued by me. Especially as it relates to the tax rate, not necessity. I think we all agree to that. It's just where. Okay.
I, I just want to reiterate that, as I said earlier, when I made my, my suggestion, was that I don't doubt that the Fire Department needs four people. I just am looking for a possibly compromise to offset taxes. That's the only thing.
Lon?
Yeah, I've been trying to follow the math and be a good student over here. If we, if a person was disposed to follow up on Councilor Albert's proposal, I'm looking at $180,000, $160,000?
160 roughly.
160?
160 roughly.
Oh, okay. All right, well, I, I, I agree with everybody that, that we need people. We need to be efficiently operating and protecting the people at Town of Merrimack. I don't think there's any argument there. I, I think, I think the concern that, that I've been trying to express through this is that we're, we're looking at a significant increase in the budget, on the order of 1.3 million taxable dollars. 1.6 is the number, but if you add in the value of the property, it backs out another 300,000 of that. So, and, and as Nancy pointed out earlier, we've always tried to do the best we could to, to balance things. And so every time we add people, it creates problems. Adding four at a time creates some issues. But right now, we're paying for it in overtime, sort of. We don't see the savings in overtime, and that's partly because of the way we want to continue to staff the department, especially through COVID, and whenever that's gonna quote-unquote finish, if, if ever. It's gonna be interesting. But, but I certainly appreciate the additional information you brought in. If there are any other questions on the, the four firefighters, and their needs and things like that?
No, just, I've been quiet. I just wanted to let everybody know that I, I concur, that we need four firefighters. Going back to the, the data that was presented to us last year in Council Harrington, thank you for bringing that up. I, I forgot about that particular report. But I do share the same sentiments of, how do we get there? And I think, I just wanted to let my thoughts, you know, that for me, it's the tax rate and how do we get there. I think there's, there's no, no dispute that, that we need four additional first responders in our community, so, thank you.
One more comment I want to make, I promise this is the end.
Doesn't have to be.
Is that, in my mind, because I will be looking at starting it, there are items that we've already addressed to a certain extent that might be able to be modified to be able to accommodate it. And those are gonna be hard decisions to make, too, because everything can be justified. I don't think any of our department heads has presented, and neither has the town manager presented, something that hasn't been really closely evaluated in terms of need. So part of our deliberation will have to be, you know, if we do want the four firefighters, which is what I will be looking at, what is it that we'd have to give up this year in order to accommodate that, to be able to address the need? And there'll be some tough calls to make, so. But I appreciate, you know, Councilor Albert, thank you for bringing up at least the discussion of the compromise. That's important.
I appreciate it, and I, I absolutely understand the aspect of where it's coming from and the Fire Department, so.
So our plan at the moment is to discuss our final budget deliberations on Wednesday of next week, starting at 6:30. And we'll go through each budget at that point. So unless you have anything else you want to present or, or suggest.
Thank you all very much for your time, I really appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Chief, chief.
AC Brechtel, congratulations. Your plan for the pandemic, second to none.
No, I didn't. I started at the last minute. What is he doing now?
What?
What's Paul doing now?
Oh, he's doing the other part of tonight's agenda, which was Capital Reserve Fund review. There's just some people I'll take grief from, Eileen, but. Yeah, I think we need to understand where that's going. I don't know, where is Capital Reserve? What are we talking about, Paul?
We're talking about the Capital Reserve Funds, the projects. There's been a lot of discussion about Capital Reserve and Capital Reserve funding. And as we've mentioned before, DRA has changed the, the formula for our Capital Reserve Fund withdrawals. Now that the council is agents to expand, we used to put them in the budget, they're no longer in the budget. But it doesn't give everybody a, a clear picture of why we are putting deposits into Capital Reserves, because it looks like we have these balances without a withdrawal. So I'd just like to go over the withdrawals that are planned in the Capital Reserve Funds, in the CIP, and discuss them to, to give an overall picture of where we stand with Capital Reserve Funds. Next year, in the 2122, this could be, for those that have their.
Is this something we have?
Yes, except, for those who have their budget books, it's in the. Next year, in the 21, 22, this could be, for those that have their.
Is this something we have?
Yes, except for those who have their budget books, it's in the front of your budget books, underneath the town manager. Items that's there.
Okay.
For those who have the, uh, the USB. Yeah, for those who have the USB, it's called budget summary sheets. It's in the budget summary sheets.
Where's, where's the budget summary sheet?
Uh, it's, uh.
Oh, that's another thing on the USB?
Yeah, it's another thing on the USB. Budget summary sheets. So, so.
I got it.
You got it? So it's there. It's the tab that's called CFR purchases. CRF.
CIP, no.
No, it's called budget summary.
Budget summary documents?
No, no, budget summary documents. It's a separate, uh, file.
There's a summary of revenues, a summary of appropriations, and a summary document. Just calm down.
It's, it's, uh.
I have it, it's right, it's right here.
Throw it on Finley, he's struggling with digital.
CRF purchases?
Yes, CRF purchases. You got it?
So it's the budget summary document, TM 20, 21 dash 22. Got that, Finley? Budget summary document.
It's not in the, it's not on the tab. It's, it's a separate file.
It's another one in the USB. You didn't bring the other USB, or? But it's another one in that. Yeah, would you, would you go make copies and we'll finish before you get back?
Finley is trying to keep the semiconductor business in, business. So.
We'll wait for you, don't worry.
So.
Wow. I have two copies. Summary, budget summary documents, TM 20, 21, 22. And then there's a tab called CRF purchases.
So, um. So these are some of the purchases that we're looking to move forward with in, in next year's budget. And we, we talked a little bit about the campus Wi-Fi for Town Hall. And, and, and that really became apparent during some of our Zoom calls and things of that sort, when we're discussing it, and, and the Wi-Fi was dropping and, and moving from, from section to section. And then Microsoft 360, we're looking into that. And that's about $56,000 that would come out of the general government computer equipment capital reserve fund.
So Microsoft 360 is new licenses for all the computers in town, or something?
Well.
Annual licenses, 46,000 a year?
That, we might be moving to Office 365, the web.
Yeah.
The web port, and that, that's what it would cost, $46,000 for us to move to that platform. And it would be annual.
That's an annual renewal. What are we paying now?
We have 50,000, $50,000 in for some of our licenses and equipment upgrades. It, it depends which licenses we need and when we need them. We, we run our Microsoft licenses into the ground. Um, we have computers that, that are operating. 2010, some that are operating on 2007, some that are operating at 2015, some that are operating with 2017. They're, it's all over the place.
So you would gain some efficiency in being able to share data if everybody's on the same version?
Yes.
Then 365 automatically updates everybody all at the same time.
Correct. And the other thing is, is that our exchange server, we use an Exchange 2003. That's end of life. So we have to go from 2003 to 2010 to go to 2015. So it's a good time to look at Office 365 with that, because the mailboxes, you pay by mailbox, and we can really look at our mailboxes, and that would be all cloud-based, and we wouldn't need our own infrastructure, meaning servers for that. So we'd save costs in, in the servers. But that is one of the tasks that the new IT person will be tasked with. One of the, one of many tasks when he walks into the door, but that's one of the first ones that he has to look at, because we are coming to end the life with our exchange.
So if we went to 365, it wouldn't be coming out of the capital reserve fund anymore, it would just be in the budget?
Yeah, it would move to the budget, but for the first year, it would, that would be the purchase.
Potentially, you could pay for it out of that.
But after, and when it becomes recurring, it would definitely have to drop to the budget.
All right, thank you.
Yep. We talked about the revaluation, um, is another $35,000. Library has a carpet replacement and HVAC project for 110 total, 10,000 for carpet, 100,000 for HVAC. Uh, ambulance, so, uh, fire department's looking to buy an ambulance next year for 200,000. Have some fire equipment, um, computer upgrade replacements for their apparatus. SCBA filling station that, uh, we got that grant to buy the mask and the tanks. We kept the filling station that we had. We need to upgrade that filling station. And then a portable or inflatable boat. Uh, traffic light, opti-com replacement, those are the, um, the red beacons that you see on top of the traffic lights. That lets emergency vehicles, when they're approaching an intersection, change the light to, from red to green to get them through the intersection safely. Talked about some drainage improvements in road infrastructure. And then the highway equipment, they're looking for a back, backhoe or a loader, a wood chipper, a 10-wheel dump truck, a, or trailer for a roller. And that's about $400,000 total, um, there. Solid waste, we talked about the live floor trailer and a pickup truck, that's 105,000. So coming out of general fund, it's 1,300, 1,292,000 dollars.
Out of, out of, not general fund.
At a capital reserve fund.
Out of capital reserve funds.
That are associated with deposits from the general fund.
But they've already been made.
They've already been made, but these are ones that affect, the deposits affect the tax rate. They come out a part, they're the separate warrant article that go with them.
But you're not listing here what we're planning to deposit.
No, we're, I'm just listing what we're planning on withdrawing.
Withdrawing from capital reserve funds that are already in savings account.
That we have money, yes. And then in the sewer infrastructure, looking at some manhole sewer rehab for 25. Replacement of a very old caterpillar loader that they use in compost, um, they're looking to replace that for about 100,000. Sewer system assessment, 13,000. Penn and Chuck pump station upgrade, that's the design for 50,000. Birch Street pump station upgrade, the design is 25,000. And SCDA upgrade, uh, is 75,000. And that is the technology that all the pump stations talk to wastewater. So wastewater is looking for 288,000 oh zero two zero, um, coming out of capital reserves. If you go back one tab, it says CRF. Yeah, or in the books on the next page. And, and really what this does is, if I could, just give me a second here. So. So if you, what we talked about, for instance, we have a hun, projecting at the end of this fiscal year, 6:30, we'd have 180,000 dollars in the ambulance capital reserve fund. We're estimated to put 100,000 dollars into that fund. We're taking out 200,000 dollars. At the end of 6:30, 2000, 2022, they'd be a balance of 80, 80,000 dollars. And what we did is, is we went through and, and we looked at all these capital reserves. Let me just take out another column here. So we went through and looked at all these capital reserves, and, and this would be the balance of where we're at with, with some of these projects as they, as they come down. You know, like, we talked about the computer capital reserve. We, we, we have 35, almost 36,000. We're putting 35,000 in, we're looking to take 56,000 out. We'll have about 15,000 dollars when, when it is done. Highway equipment, we're putting 400,000 dollars in, we're taking around 400,000 dollars out. And it goes. Goes down. The big one is, I want to talk about is the road infrastructure capital reserve, because it does look like there's a lot of money in that, um, projected 1,093,000. But remember, we have bridge projects coming up. We have some drainage projects coming up. That's where that money comes out of. So we'll be, we're, like I said before, what I look at is, I, I get the CIP, I get where the money's, but where we're, the cost is per budget, and I run the numbers through, and I try to come up with the best deposit to fund future, the future transactions as well, so that we're not trying to dump a ton of money into a capital reserve and spiking for that one year, just to get a project, to try to smooth that out. And that's one of the best parts about cap, we're using capital reserves, is that you can smooth out your tax rate when, with deposits, because you're saving for these big purchases, like our RMS system, our, in, in, in police, brick and management system in police, and some of these other, uh, big ones of fire trucks and, and things of that sort. We're, we're saving for them over a number of years. And, and we're able to smooth out the tax rate, and we don't get these big spikes up and down. We'll have to go out, in some communities, they go out and have to bond for some of their equipment, because they don't have enough money in their, uh, in their, because of the spike it would cause in their tax rate, so.
Eileen?
While we're on the topic, and I see that the, um, the word milfoil, it was requested of us that we change the name milfoil of the fund to, um, to aquatic invasive species. And, um, what is the process in that, Paul?
The process to change a name is, uh, a warrant article has to be, uh, on the, um, put into, for the voters. And to change a name, it has to have a 62-thirds vote for passage, to change the name. Just to change the name.
A 2-thirds vote?
Yes, remember, we did that several years ago, and to change the name, it was a 2-thirds vote. We also have to look at it, and I have not, today, didn't get a chance to, but we have to look at the warrant article itself to establish capital reserve fund, and make sure that we're, if we are changing the purpose, then that's a whole different topic. But I don't believe we did, because I believe when we did this, we would talk about invasive, invasive species in waterways.
And we were getting some grant money or state money, too.
We get grant money for this as well. This is those, every year, Robert Price comes in and says, you know, I'm going to expend $27,000, the state's going to batch. It used to be 60, 40, then it was 50, 50. Now it's 70, 30, 30. They give us 30, we pay 70.
But there's nothing in that agreement that necessitates us.
That necessitates us from, it says milfoil. As long as, this is where we're paying for these waterways and these invasive species to come out of. And we'd have to look at it. But I believe when the capital reserve fund was established, it's not a capital reserve fund, it's a capital expenditure fund, which is a little different, because it's, we're not buying capital, we're expanding, it's an expendable trust. And it, um, we were looking at invasive species at that time. And the discussion was made for the invasive species.
We were looking at, I thought we were looking at milfoil, but it is an invasive species, so we may have mixed those two terms together. But that's why I asked the question is, to make sure the purpose was clear enough that we weren't going to get in trouble for switching from milfoil to to a broader invasive species, where somebody might try to take that money and go after something different than what's been traditionally used for Horseshoe Pond and, and, uh, Nanticook Lake. Barbara, did you have a question?
Yep, no, it's really a comment. Personally, I'd rather keep it the way it is, because there are well over 20 different invasive species of plants. And at any point in time, we could be told that now you've got to go after, you know, aquatic thyme, or you've got to go through fan wa, or, you know, any of those. So I would rather see an account for each different one, and since we already have milfoil, I would just leave it. And then if all of a sudden someone wants us to take care of water lilies, and we have a grant or whatever, we've, then we set up a new particular line item for that particular species. Because ultimately, we're going to ask questions of it or about it at an individual level. We're not going to take the whole aquatic species.
Actually, I don't even think we need to put this on the warrant now. Looking at the 2006 warrant article, the summary I have up here, it's milfoil or aquatic invasive species treatment expendable trust fund. We've been just calling it milfoil. And it's the treatment of variable milfoil or other invasive species in Horseshoe Pond or any other infected public body of water.
But you see, but you see, that's my point. But, but that's my point. All of a sudden now, next, you know, next six months from now, they say, now you're going to take care of parrot feather, right, which is another invasive species. And then you've got a budget, have to create a budget for that. Where are you going to put it?
Well, apparently this expenditure already covers it.
But now you've got two. You've got milfoil, you'll have parrot feather. See what I mean? So how much are you spending on each one? What's the budget?
That's up to the town council to decide how much we spend.
Well, that's why I say, leave it the way it is.
Well, it, it, it has been shorthand called milfoil, but it in fact is milfoil slash aquatic invasive species.
Yes, that, that is actually, I took that from the, um, from the warrant article. We, Tom, is he still here? Yes. Tom will check that out tomorrow, please.
Yeah, we just, we just have been shorthanding it.
Yeah, okay. So we'll, we'll verify that, that that is actually what it is, but.
Can you, Paul, can you let Representative Rung know that, or somebody?
I, I will let Rep, with, once we come up with the, what it is, I will definitely make sure Representative Rung knows.
Thank you.
Okay, so i- if we go back to the CIP information you gave us a couple of weeks ago.
Yep.
That'll show us the projected demand for the capital reserve funds?
Yes.
And how come you've come up with the numbers you've come up with?
Yes.
You don't, you don't have that in any of these kind of forms, where it goes out a couple of years to show that some of the stuff that.
No, I don't have.
Because the ambulance, you know, we're, obviously, with only 180 in there, if you're going to spend 200, we have to at least put in 20. But you're spending from this year's budget to buy that ambulance, because there's not enough money in there to buy the ambulance this year until, well, excuse me, next year's budget, to buy that ambulance. So it, it's, we're putting money in the capital reserve and then taking it right back out and spending it that same year.
Yeah, for some of the, for some of the purchases, yes.
So if we're going to play that game, we have, we have to do something there. But like you said, the 1.38 or whatever in the infrastructure, it's harder to see six-wheel dump trucks down the line and stuff like that that need to be covered.
I, I have this sheet that I do, and I will, I will print this up, and I will give you a copy of it.
That's your CIP?
This is my CIP, what I, what I talk about. These are projections by year of where we're at. We'll take the ambulance, projections by year. 184,000, 200, edit 1,000, we'll be at 84. And then what I'm projecting going forward for some of this stuff that we're purchasing in the CIP, and, and running it through. Now, I'm perfectly honest with you, these are just projections of numbers within 22, 23 to come out, because as you can see in this one, we're going from 100 to 125. But that's only because, right now, that's what we're, they're projecting an ambulance to be, maybe 225. Or what we're buying in that year is 225,000 dollars. We might not buy that, all that in that year. As we come closer to that, it might not be purchased in that year. But this is, I do that with the CIP, and that, that's how I run stuff out. And I try not to get the bottom line down as, to zero here. You know, you can see right here is, um, this one is 420,000 dollars. It started at 1.3 million for road infrastructure. So I, I will get this to the council, but we do have a sheet, and this is, like I was telling you, this is what I do.
Okay. Thanks.
So that's how we come up with the numbers for deposit.
Yeah, I understand that. And, and the deposits are part of the, they're a separate warrant article.
They're a separate warrant article, but they are part of the tax, tax base.
Tax rate.
Tax rate.
And they are? Okay. And they are, okay.
The general fund ones are part of the tax rate. So, so the sewer fund is part of the Enterprise Fund, which is a user fund. So we have two Capital Reserve Fund warrant articles each year, one for the General Fund and one for.
One for the special warrants.
Yeah.
Special things.
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions on Capital Reserve Funding? That's who we're calling this, right?
Yes.
So we're good? Okay. That takes care of that. Thank you very much. So we're meeting again Wednesday, the 27th, at 6:30. Probably going to have department heads here to defend their budget if we have any questions or things we want to change or cut. It'll be your last time to ask any specific questions as we go into it. And Paul, you were planning to come up with a sheet of anticipated adjustments based on our discussions or?
Yeah, yes. The town manager and myself, we will be going through, looking at the budget itself and, you know, hearing from what was said.
Well, you talked a couple of times about things you can do this year instead of waiting until next year on them because of, you know, so maybe a mower or something like that.
Yeah, right.
So there's a, a lot of small numbers, if you will, that maybe can be moved.
Right.
And if you can get those in advance to us, that would be awesome. But I don't know how you feel about that.
We can work on that and try to get that out before Wednesday.
Right under the bus there, Paul.
That's it. Got that short-tiber stuff going on over there. But yes, we can try to get that out. The other thing, yes, we will. The other thing is, is that the non-union raises.
Yeah, so talk to us about that. Do you have a number figured out for what a 2% raise would cost?
Yeah, 2% raise would cost about 82, 82 to $83,000 for non-union. For the General Fund, of course, media, and wastewater also has some money. But since those are both special revenue funds, it doesn't affect the tax rate.
They would still balance into their budgets. But I don't know if anybody wants to express an opinion on, that's the only thing that's really missing out there, I believe, is any non-union wage increases. There's 2% across the board for union members.
And that's why I was.
In contract.
That's why I would be presenting a 2% for non-union, to be very similar to what the unions are getting at this time.
And you're, and you're talking 82,000?
82,000, and that's fully loaded just, 82,000.
Right. Retirement and everything.
Yeah.
When the tax rate we see proposed for this budget, is that number included in there?
Nope.
No.
So that's add, what, another 2 cents?
Yes.
Just over 2, yeah.
But as we come forward, you'll see there are some savings that we are, to help offset that. So it's not going to.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's around 2 to 3 cents, but there, we have some savings.
We've talked about throughout this budget cycle, several things that we can adjust.
Sharpen your pencils.
Paying in this year instead of next year, kind of thing.
You know, I don't want to get on my soapbox, because I, like, I guess part of me feels like, you know, when we were talking tonight, we talked about the fire department. And again, I do believe, this is, and this is one of those arguments where we've all said, we know you need it, but we're trying to work it out in the budget. And that's where I come from. That's the spirit of where I come from with that. And earlier in the past weeks, we had the presentation of removing the conservation officer, which I'm for to save another 30,000. And we kind of go, well, that's only a penny off the budget or whatever, but these pennies add up.
Absolutely.
To get us down, because we're now at 37. If we add 2 to 3 cents, we're at 40 cents overall last year. And Nancy, I agree with you. I mean, there should be some pushback with, I mean, we are, we, this council's been good for the four years I've been on it. And I think I've always been impressed by this, by the council. It's always tried to do the right things, get the equipment, but do it, and the town manager and the finance director, and do it in a reasonable fashion. And sometimes we feel like we're doing it only to offset another entity. I'll leave it at that, but. So, yeah, I guess we have to sharpen our pencils. And maybe not decimate things, but take a little hair in there.
We'll come to a consensus one way or the other.
Thank you for letting me have my moment.
Would you like another one?
Yep.
I'm done.
We good? Any other questions, comments? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion from Barbara.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Passes 700. What?